Okay, close off please. There will be a public hearing of the Village of Washington planning board this evening. This is a public hearing for the 61 East Main Street site plan. There's a sign up sheet for those who wish to make comments. Comments are limited to three minutes per person. We will be timing you. It will be a little long, it tends to have a long one up. But at three minutes, it's time to stop talking to yous. Comments must be specific to the 61 East Main Street project. Hate speech or inappropriate language will end a person's time instantly. Comments may also be submitted in writing to the building department at washingtongo-nyork.gov. All project written comments are distributed to the village planning board members, the applicant, and the village planning board legal and engineering advisors. Village planning board will review the comments and consider them and review of the overall project. The applicant may choose to respond. A response is not required unless the planning board so directs the applicant. The legal and engineering advisors will review submitted comments and advise the village planning board as needed. All comments become part of the public record for our project. First item up is accept the 10 January village planning board meeting minutes. They've been distributed, reviewed, in motion.
We made a motion that we accept the minutes. Thank you, Tom.
Second.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All ayes. Okay, next up on the agenda is discussion applicant 61 East Main Street Associate LLC, site plan on subdivision slash slot line change, 61 East Main Street, section block and lot 114 hyphen 3 hyphen 3 dot 22 and 113 hyphen 2 hyphen 31. We're going to discuss the January night submission and see for a long form replies this evening. Mike, thank you.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Michael Morgante. I am the project engineer for this application before the Village of Washington planning boards. I'll give a quick overview of the project because we had done prior public hearings. So I'm sure the public is well aware of what the proposal is. However, shown here, located at 61 East Main Street, we are proposing two multifamily buildings, each building with a 7,000 square foot footprint. There'll be approximately about 14 rooms per floor for a total of 28 units of 56 bedrooms. This project meets all the bulk requirements for the table and zoning requirements. We need our lock coverage calculations. We've established sewage flow rates for this project. We provide parking calculations. We've met all the requirements as it relates to both bulk regulations for zoning and parking for this particular project, shown. We have 56 parking spaces showing in between the two buildings with a few spaces behind. There are some refuse enclosures located in towards the bottom of the page. And one in this location here. That is, and another one right there. There is a 100-year flood zone that goes from the property at elevation 307. And we'll talk about that in the next plan that I showed, which is the grading plan. But essentially, there were three main items that the public was concerned about from the previous public hearings that we've had. The first of which being traffic, the second of which being flooding and stormwater. And flooding and stormwater really being number two and number three, respectively. So in order to deal with or mitigate flooding impacts, what we did was we took a look at what the 100-year flood elevation was, which again is elevation 307. And we were providing some photographs from the public as it related to, I think, post hurricane Sandy situations as it related to the property, which showed some water or floodwaters that kind of approached the front steps of the building. We took that information, went back to the grading plan, and essentially used that information to raise the building up for what we had originally proposed, and that was 1.3 feet. So the first floor elevation of both of these buildings, just to be clear, is at 313.3. Our actual 100-year flood elevation is 307. We are 6.3 feet above the 100-year flood elevation at this point. I've done other projects in the Village of Washington, I know what that flood elevation is, the projects I've designed, and have been built, have been tested by those hurricanes. They have not been flooded, and I will say it's been designed at a lower elevation that we're providing for this particular project. What you'll see here in this location and the site, our subsurface stormwater system, that stormwater system will capture, treat, and attenuate stormwater flows that are generated by the improper surfaces on this project. And there are some outlet pipes in these subsurface stormwater systems that will discharge out into this area here, just before an Army Corps of Engineers wetland. And the Moonee Creek would be shown as you continue down the page in that location right there. So again, our stormwater system is designed to handle the 100-year storm event. Our site has been graded and raised 6.3 feet above what the established 100-year flood elevation is. This project has clearly provided mitigation for those two potential situations associated with this project. That pretty much kind of concludes my presentation in terms of changes that were made to the plan that were related to the major items of flooding and stormwater. And on that note, I will pass the baton to Philip Reilly, who is our traffic consultant, and he will expand on what we've done since last meeting as it relates to traffic.
Good evening, Philip Reilly from Cotters Engineering and Design. Just for those people that weren't at the last hearings, I'll give a quick recap of what was done and where we are process-wise. So we had prepared a detailed traffic impact study according to procedures required by New York State DOT and other agencies back in 2021. That study was updated at the direction of your planning board to provide additional information, confirmation relative to school bus traffic and some other operational details. That was updated in May of 2022. So as part of the traffic study, we look at existing traffic conditions, growth in background traffic. The traffic study focused, of course, along Route 94 corridor in the immediate vicinity of the site and over towards Brotherhood and points to the west. So in terms of the traffic projections for the site, those are all based on standard criteria that DOT requires. It's based on what's called the Institute of Transportation Engineers. The values that we used in this report are at the high end of the range, to be conservative, as per DOT's request. The study projected out into the future, evaluated into sections, made certain improvement recommendations. We are at a point now with New York State DOT, we have conceptual approval of our access driveway and the radii, the sidewalks, the treatments in that vicinity. We're working through some final drainage details as part of our permit. One important factor that DOT is requiring of this applicant, at the cost of the applicant, is what we call some off-site mitigation. Okay, off-site traffic mitigation. New York State DOT will require this applicant to install video detection at the signal at Brotherhood Plaza and 94, as well as at the intersection of Route 94 and 208 in the center of the building. And the purpose of that is to, number one, by having the video detection, New York State DOT can, without having to come out and look at a location, can access it from their computer. It's more reliable. When a traffic signal which has detection, sometimes that detection will fail. They have to come out and repair it. So by having the video detection installed, and at Brotherhood Plaza, it will be covered with one video. At 208 and 94, there's two video cameras required to cover that because it looks at both traffic flow, pedestrian flows, and it allows DOT to make it work more efficiently and adjusting to certain times. As part of the updated study, as I said, we had to provide more information about the operations of school buses in the village along 94 during both morning and afternoon peak hours. So that was all accounted for in our studies. And that's just kind of a quick synopsis. As I said, we're conceptually approved by New York State DOT. We're in what's called the highway work permit process. That process started last April. And we're, you know, basically responding to final details relative to before they'll issue a permit. Thank you.
Good question.
Yes?
Earlier in the conversation, you were talking about the crosswalk opposite the property.
Yes.
Signal there.
So at the, there's an existing crosswalk on 94. So part of that, we're going to redo that crosswalk, re-stripe it. And part of the improvement also will allow the possible installation of what's called an RRFB, a Rapid Flashing Beacon. That's another condition of the DOT requirements. At this point, they, they want us to monitor it. They want us to re-stripe the crosswalk, fix all the ADA ramps at that location. But we would be responsible to also put in, at their direction, this RRFB, which is activated by push button and then it flashes. Right now, they've told us that they don't want it installed now, but they want us to monitor as part of our permit. And that would be an additional requirement of our permit, addition to the other improvements.
I have a question regarding DOT. DOT responds to you?
DOT will respond to the village. The, the correspondence that we have right now is emails, reviewing plans and submissions. But we have gotten the last correspondence. I don't know if the village has it, but we can provide you copies.
Okay, I just wanted to confirm that all of us have the DOT correspondence in full light. It doesn't seem to talk about DOT. If you have some, not intentionally, but everyone else doesn't have it as well.
We'll make sure that you get copies of everything this way. If there was something that didn't get here, you have it. The latest correspondence, by the way, is from December 5th of 2022. And the correspondence referring to the signal upgrades was from September of 2022. You have any deals?
I'm going to add one more thing. I don't believe our project planner was able to make it tonight. I don't see him in the audience receiving anywhere. So I just want to also make the point that at the November meeting, we came before the board, and the board at that time had listened to all the comments and concerns from the public, compiled everything, and asked us to go through a Part II EAF with them, where we looked at the impacts to the project, whether they were noticeable, impact of moderate to large, and prepared this thousand-page document that we've provided to the board, which kind of compiles all of our studies, including the zoning analysis that we provided to the CBA, provides a narrative in the beginning of the document, which specifically responds to each one of those concerns that were noted in the Part II EAF. I was going to have our planner make that presentation, but I don't see him, so I'm just going to jump in. In his place. Would you like to make a quick discussion? I think we're reaching. So at this point, I think that concludes our presentation. We'll turn it over to the board and the consultants if they got any questions and if you want to open up a question for the public.
Do you have any other questions?
Sure. I have a question regarding you saying your stormwater management system. You're going to...
Louder, please.
Please.
Is that better?
No.
No.
One, two, one, two.
How's that? Yes? Hello, I'll give it a charge. Is that it? Can you hear me now? No? Yes?
Yes.
Okay. On the stormwater management system, you say you're using inverted retain it? That's if the cubicle or cement box type thing, okay. Sediment will, by nature, go into that. You also referenced that it's going to trap oil. So I'm sure you referenced some hydrocarbons, et cetera, okay? Will there be a float in there to grab the hydrocarbons so it doesn't pass through? Some of them have inserts, I'm sure you're aware. I'm not trying to, I'm just offering a question. And also on the maintenance, the sediment removal, and where would those records be maintained?
So the sediment and oils go into a separate isolation chamber. That isolation chamber, these are ADS storm chambers, by the way. These chambers, they go into the isolation chamber. It's, all the sediment and oils are kept there. There's inspection cords for this so that people can look in and see what the conditions are. There's a recommended routine maintenance, which is associated with the stormwater pollution prevention plan, which is in the back of the appendices. They basically come here with a vacuum truck, just like a septic tank cleaning truck. And they basically put their hose in there and they basically vacuum everything out. We have not prepared a specific, like, data record-keeping plan, but we can certainly make that a part of, any approval this board grants. Then we would have to maintain operations and maintenance records on site for when this thing is maintaining things. We'd have no problem with that. And that could be reviewed in force by the building department.
And the records will be kept where?
They could be onsite, but we can talk about that locally.
You have to give an office there, is there going to be an office?
There very well will be. If not, we can certainly make those records available to the building department.
Okay, just to mention something briefly, and I don't think, there should be some copies along the table, but the traffic and stormwater control was one of the major issues with the public and comments. So we did ask them to break that out, and we did make copies available to the public. And if there's not enough, you can email the building inspector, and they'll make sure that they're available. And Mike, I did have a question about trash, briefly. Recyclables versus regular trash. Most of the multifamily homes that accompany you within the village have a recyclable can and a trash can. Are we, are your, is the site plan prepared for that? Or is it handled differently? Is this going to be on the village garbage district or private garbage district?
So I've never been asked that level of details relates to recycling or just regular solid stream, recycling stream. But we can certainly, again, put a condition like that on the map that says that there should be garbage cans provided to the residents that both are blue and normal for recycle stream and waste stream. I have no problem with that. I'm not sure at this point whether it's going to be built for private. I haven't even given that a thought quite frankly, but we can certainly work that out. If it puts an undue burden on village resources, we can certainly investigate having a private waste management program.
I have a question on the parking. You have, what do you have, 58 spots, 56 spots? Okay, four of them are for handicap parking?
I believe so, yeah.
Okay, so does that mean that, how do the rest of the people park if there's no one handicapped there?
So I do believe there'll be some units that are allocated for handicap residences and whatnot, most likely on the first floor. I'm talking, is that better? If I talk a little louder, like that? Okay, super. So there will be some ADA accessible apartments. We do expect they will be occupied. Those spaces will be utilized. But the balance of the 52 spaces is still adequate for the remaining apartments. Two spaces per dwelling unit is actually a pretty excessive parking rate. I've worked in other municipalities where it's one space per first bedroom and then a quarter of a space for every bedroom after that. And we're actually at two spaces per bedroom, so we're providing quite a bit of parking.
Okay, as a follow-up to that. As a follow-up to that, there are no visitor spaces, though. Everyone is allocated for residents of these apartments. You've got, you've got two spaces for every unit, is that right?
Correct, but that should include visitor parking as well.
Wait, wait, wait. So you're saying that those spaces, two for an apartment, will also mean if visitors stop by, they can park in one of those spaces?
Correct, yes.
Okay, the visitors, if visitors are handicapped, do they can use the handicap parking spot?
They should be able to, yeah, there should be enough handicap parking spaces for them as well. We've provided the amount of parking spaces for ADA handicapped people in the courts or whatever.
I understand.
Please, please, so we can converse.
Thank you. I'm trying to speak louder, so I hope that works for you. Okay, thank you for answering that. I also have another question related to traffic movement on site. Specifically, leaving the back of the property and putting snow melt onto a grassy area, okay, where it will melt? Okay, subsequent piling of snow? Okay, so that will be placed in the backyard, so to speak?
Correct.
Okay. The vehicle will turn around in there and come back out and plow some more on the grass?
Correct, I mean, the idea is that a majority... But a majority of the snow dump area is...
It's right where you have that sort of amoeba shaped to the left there?
Yep, that's correct.
That's right where it is?
Right, but you can see it lay in the snow over there right there.
Yeah, so it'll be right there. I also have a question because you're using salt as your de-icing agent?
We will, most likely, yes.
Okay, avoiding sand, you said in your study?
We would.
There are alternatives to that? Have you examined the USDAOT lists that have several choices that perform better than salt without the environmental risk and without sand?
Have not, but would be glad to.
Thank you, we can give you that information.
Super.
So, just so I get it, the snow will be plowed around, put in the back, and as subsequent layers of snow with residual in there get piled up, that's where it will be?
Correct.
Thank you.
I got a quick, and with the snow removal, is there a car relocation plan? Because we can't put any cars on 94. And it's probably not enough, but is there a plan, I guess is the way, best way to put it?
No, we haven't given that any thought. That's a very good comment. Again, there should be leftover parking spaces based on the parking count we have that will not be used, but we'll have to look at that a little bit more.
Okay.
Hi, my name is Jacqueline Davis Morris. I just have one question. It's, I've been in the village for 22 years, and I noticed that when we had some building going on there, I mean, that there was an issue with the water and sewage. Was that addressed prior to my joining the planning board? Because there was a tower, they were talking about building another tower. So I'm just trying to figure out, how is that going to impact the water and sewage in the village?
So we've had a discussion with the planning board engineer. We've also had discussions with the village's DPW. There is currently plenty of additional capacity for both the water and sewer to serve this project. Just to give an idea, I think it's on the prior sheet. So... So we're looking at sewage and water usage for this site would be about 6,160 gallons per day. I can't remember the additional capacity off the top of my head, but the DPW told me they had, but it's quite sufficient.
John, do you have anything?
I did provide a letter. Most of the comments are technical in nature. The ones that were conceptual are really items that have already been covered in the presentation.
Okay, moving on to your letter. The landscaping, could you tell us a little bit about the landscaping plan? And specifically the blinds to the right and left, if they're, do you put any blinds?
It's going to block, like, this is new?
No, not blinds, but up to the right and left of the property.
The screening.
Oh, screen, what's your screening? Oh, there's a wrong choice of words. No, that's okay. Let me get to the landscaping plan a little quick.
It's an older computer, sorry.
No, it's, I appreciate this, and I think the public does awesome. So you can see here for this size project, we've got a pretty extensive landscaping plan. What we've done is actually provided like a little village pocket park that's up here along 94. We're actually dedicating a portion of 94 back to the state. That's usually what they require in terms of creating their established 50-foot wide of way. So that's also in the works. And what we've got here, also on the sides of the property, are a large dense road, Arboretum, with the intent to provide screening between neighboring properties. Arboretum worked quite well when it comes to screening. We've used them several times on other projects. And the pocket park in the front is a really nice feature. That's something we've been working on with the village from the inception of the project. And I think it'll be a really nice site feature, that people will enjoy it, both in use and visual impact.
And the area behind it, if you're not going to build on, it's going to be good.
Yep. Good questions, Mr. Chairman. Let me go back to site plan. Okay, so... The parcel, the project actually consists of two parcels. There's 113, 2 dash 31 in the front, and 114, 1 dash 3.22 in the back. Essentially, this entire rear parcel will be placed into permanent conservation use, meaning that it'll never be built on for anything at all. That'll be established between our project attorneys, the village attorney, and we will file this in the Orange County Clerk's office. You can also file it locally with your clerk. So we intend to, again, keep this entire back parcel here, which is 2.2 acres, green in perpetuity.
Okay. On your EAF, you have construction hours that are quite generous. Can you explain why you need the extra time on Saturday mornings at 7:00 AM?
We typically like to allow flexibility for construction. I don't know that all those hours will ever be used, but sometimes they are required. The point being is that we're in the middle of a concrete core. Trucks get there late, something happens, they start late, but they've got to finish that, that particular portion of the project. So, I mean, generally, construction hours are usually about 7 to 3, 7 to 4. That's what most people work in the industry. But we like to get a little bit of additional hours just in case there's an issue with what I just spoke about. That's really the only reason for it.
Just, just, you know. I'm thinking 9:00 PM is not going to happen.
Well, that might not be a correct number. We should probably change that, and I would agree with that.
Thank you.
That's probably incompatible with what's on the planes, actually. That's probably a type.
Tom has a question.
This goes way back to when we first had a meeting and the public was here. I haven't seen anything else about it. Do you foresee the bus in the morning and the afternoon stopping on 94 and blocking traffic both ways? Or is there enough room for a bus to pull in there, pick up for discharged kids, and do a circle and come out? Does that even mean? Somebody brought it up here a while ago.
Typically, the school buses will not pull into this type of development. They want to stop on 94, do the pickups the way they do today throughout that corridor. So the site is designed though that if the school bus company wanted to come in, they could get in and turn around. But my experience has been, especially in village areas, they will stop as they do today and pick up the students or drop off the students, as they do in the corridor today.
I know they have the limitation.
Yeah.
To do a turnaround.
You know, the turnaround was designed to accommodate, you know, fire vehicles. It would accommodate a bus, but even if it accommodates them, they usually want to stay on Route 94 because that's their operating.
Okay, I think this is my last question. With respect to reziding the building, the additional grading, it looks like you've got a little step or parapet and then where the drains come out. Two questions, two-part question. How big a parapet or how high? And where the drains do come out from the underwater retention, is there any chance of creating a pond or flooding or anything like that? Like, you know, creating a big water place where kids could get hurt or anything?
So if I'm not mistaken, I think the parapet is about three foot tall. When we had to bring in the additional fill, it required me to now design a retaining wall in the back. And in order to minimize the amount of fill we're placing in the floodplain, which is a concern that residents had, this was kind of the design I've come up with at this point. Recognizing that it's got some challenges that need to be worked out in terms of still snow removal and other things. So, I mean, that's, to answer your question, what's designed right now. But there may be some more modifications as we go forward.
And where the water discharge comes out?
Yep, so what we have there, if we go to the grading plan. So what we've done generally in this area here was we're bringing fill in in the rear of the property over here. And in order to compensate, what we've done is excavate out the area directly behind that parapet wall that leads to that Army Corps of Engineer wetland. So we have created a bit of like a bowl back there, so to speak. It will positively drain to the moon ultimately and into this wetland first. But there is a bit of a low spot in there right now. I mean, the parapet wall was to try to do two things, to try to protect vehicles from, instead of having a timber guide rail there, we look at a parapet wall instead. We may be looking at a timber guide rail as opposed to the parapet wall moving forward.
You mentioned some apartments for ADA, and I assume that these apartments are going to be available to rent to the general public, everyone?
Yes, sir, yes. It'll be available to rent to anybody in the general public.
Where is the list?
I heard you say earlier about the landscaping, that you were going to use an arborite? Although the deer will treat, but you know how the deer love them also, how we can maintain that?
Yeah, I agree, I do understand that. We do feel that the arborite are a bit of a better choice than other evergreens. The only reason being is they kind of grow more tall than they do wide. So we will have to have proper landscape maintenance. We'll have to make sure that we're finding ways to prevent the deer from destroying them. And if they are, I believe my landscaping plans have a maintenance guarantee associated with it. So we can, we can make that maintenance guarantee be whatever we need it to be, that if during the course of their existence, something dies, it needs to be replaced. Die, if it dies or is eaten, I should say.
Yeah, I understand about the evergreens and that you didn't want to use those. Yeah, arborite, how much, you know, how much, how will that really isolate that area from other houses? Like, I have arborite on the side of my house and it's, they don't provide a lot of insulation from my neighbors. So I'm just wondering, did you consider anything else besides the evergreen? I know you said that you considered that.
You'd be looking at things like a regular evergreen tree and norway spruce. They have big, they have very large spreads. So the concern there is just whether or not the spread would encroach on a neighboring property and potentially our building. So from that standpoint, we felt that the arborites are the best selection.
Thank you, John, legal. Okay. At this time, we're going to open this up for public comment. And everyone is complimented for three minutes. There's a list circulated. Selena, do you have the list?
I do. If anybody hasn't signed up and would like to, the list is up here at the table. Once we get through the first list, you can certainly raise your hand and we'll go one by one after that.
Okay, Selena's going to call the names one by one. Joanne will be doing the timing, which is going to be a 10-second warning. And after that, just stop talking, please. Okay, first up.
Sure, and I'm going to need some clarification on the spelling of the last name, please. Steven Mogel?
Correct, M-O-G-E-L. And where shall I stand?
Please, the chairman, and the public, you're welcome.
Good evening, everyone. Steve Mogel, I represent Takes a Village 10992, which is a community organization which I'm sure the board is familiar with. I did submit, I did submit a brief statement to the board. I hope that that was disseminated. If not, I have copies. In any event, I would like to speak tonight about the substance of the project, but unfortunately, I'm really not able to. And the reason that I'm not able to is because of what I see as a persistent pattern of violation of the open meetings law. Public Officer's Law 106-1 says-
Excuse me, Mr. Mogel. Do you have something to say about the project itself, or you want to pick on that for yourself?
Yes, no, no, excuse me, excuse me. That's, this, this is, the procedure is the process. I'm not here, I'm not here necessarily to talk to you about whether you're using arborite. What I am here to talk to you is about something that I do know, which is the law. The law with regard to this, 106-1, 106-1, excuse me. 106-1, this is outrageous, it really is. I, I don't appreciate being bullied. I'm here at a public hearing and I'm pointing out that you're violating the law, that you cannot do what you're doing. 106-1, if the police, if the police want to take me out-
Mr. Mogel, we are receiving other letter and legal counsel for the board will review it.
That's very, that's great, but I'm going to continue, okay? There were, as far as we could determine, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8 dates at which this board met to discuss this project. There, the village website reveals there's no minutes from any of those eight times. There was a file request that was done for the 2021 minutes, when this started, this project started in June of 2021, or at least this current iteration started in June of 2021. And there are no minutes from 2021. The law requires, if there, anything that's done, if there are no minutes that are filed, and they're supposed to be filed within two weeks, okay? If there are no minutes that are filed, any actions that were taken by the board at that time are avoidable by the court. It's unclear, when we look, when you look at the website or try to review the documents here, whether a secret was complied with, whether this project, which has been around for at least 18 months, has had a determination and been classified as either a type 1 or an unlisted, whether there's been an un, whether it's uncoordinated-
You can give a nice remark, being that he was interrupted.
That's correct. Whether there was an uncoordinated or coordinated review that was completed or ordered. I, I, I just want to put my objection on the record. I've appeared in front of literally dozens of municipalities. I've never had a municipality that does not allow me to speak about the law. The one thing that I am confident to speak about. I can't talk about arborites, I don't know what they are. Thank you very much.
Donna Jaggeruso. Donna Jaggeruso, 39th and Field Drive. Please don't start that clock yet because I have a question before I have comments. And I'm using the advice that was given to me, to read between the lines. So this is not a comment right now. I just would like to note, we have three new planning board members. Did you receive the nine-page letter that we submitted from It Takes a Village?
Hi, Ms. Jaggeruso. You have three minutes to comment on 61 East Main Street.
I'm asking if they received my documents.
The attorney at college, the receiver of the letter from your attorney?
No, 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 no. They don't, no, not that. There were two letters that were submitted. I'm asking if the new board members received-
Three minutes to comment on 61 East Main Street, that's it.
All right, you know what, I'm going to pick up on the traffic. So there was a traffic study done in 2018 that was submitted to the DOT. There was the other one that was done in December of '21. The one from '18 was done in the summer, it should not even be relevant. The recent one in '21 was not actually submitted to the DOT with your independent traffic study. I don't think anybody in the town that lives in the village needs a traffic study to know what we deal with during rush hour, number one. Number two, we're talking about the parking and we're talking about handicap parking, but- Three codes that this submission is still in conflict with. We have our zoning codes. Number one is parking, 175-52. That parking is not permitted to be in between two buildings. It is to be in the rear of the building. So this should have been revised. All off, all off-street parking spaces shall be situated in the rear yard of the lot or behind the main building. Number two, 175-52D. All construction, reconstruction, or alteration of a building must be inconsistent with the architectural style of what's prevalent in that area. Apartment buildings are not that. They do not conform to the landscape of what is on East Main Street. We all know the reason that we are here tonight is because of a holes in our zoning code. That is not a multi-dwelling zone, it is an office residential zone. And what was intended to be there were home-style looking buildings with office space below and apartments above, not apartments, but a living, a dwelling or two above. So there's a loophole and that's why we're here. We also discussed, actually, I have a question. So we are with two buildings on one lot. At one point, there was two variances that were required for that because that was not permissible. One building per lot is what was acceptable. Another applicant got turned down for two structures on one parcel. And then went to the ZBA. And all of a sudden, they didn't need two variances anymore, they only needed one. And I begged for that. And where, why, how did that happen and why did that happen? So we're down to one variance. And that is for a lot line removal. So, correct me if I'm wrong, 14,000 square feet is what's required, minimum? 14,000, sir? Mike?
Correct.
Okay, so minimum square foot per dwelling is 14,000 square feet. Your parcel that's buildable is 2.3 acres. So that comes out to 100,188 square feet. If you take that number, I'll use your number because you calculated 101, 532 square feet. If we take your number and divide it by the 14,000 square foot minimum lot per dwelling unit, that comes out, and correct me if I'm wrong, to 7.25 total units. You're proposing 28. You're proposing 28. How, how does that happen?
Tom Lyons?
Can you answer the question? Nope?
No, he's not answering nothing.
Oh, okay. You're not going to answer.
Can I have some of my time for Donna? I've given her half my time.
No, sir, you cannot delegate your time to any person.
That's not in the rule. You didn't read that part of the rule.
We did not do a study in 2018. And the studies were done in December of '21 and May of '22. As part of the request from the planning board, we were asked to provide any historical data so that historical data included traffic counts from New York State DOT. They weren't our counts, that included counts from 2018 as well as other locations, as other dates. But just to clarify, it was, we did not do a study for 2018.
Tom Lyons?
Start your time now. My name is Tom Lyons. Over at Deckard Drive, I've been here 28 years. What was going on here the past couple of years is disgusting. So let's start this topic for here tonight. This question's for Mr. Traffic Guy. Since obviously we're not going to provide an on-ramp to 94 West from out of your development, so now what has to happen is during prime times, you're going to have to make, you'll never be able to make a left. So you have to make a right at 94, a left at Arrow Point, a left at Cartwheel, a left at Brother Plaza, then a right to get back on a lighted block of 94. Just imagine what that's going to look like. That, that's kind of disgusting. So are they going to put a no-left-hand turn coming out there at certain times? Or is it going to be a free-for-all? So I don't have enough time to answer my, for you to answer my question. That's going to put in your head. Question number two. If this is a Section 8 housing, a low-income housing, what type of community is going to move there? Is it a certain type of community? Because I don't believe that anybody can buy, can rent an apartment there. So I'd like to see a list that I can put my name on, because I'm retiring soon, so maybe I sell my house on Deckard Drive and I rent an apartment there. So I want to see if there is a real list or if this is all just up in the air. Question three.